Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorain County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the July 13th meeting of the Lorain County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Kalo has our dog from our dog pound this morning.
Good-looking dog. Our featured dog this week is a German Shepherd mix. Her name is Bailey. She was an owner surrender on May 26th. She's great on a leash. She's seven years old, not real rambunctious. She'd make a great pet for someone. Like I said, she's been there almost two months, so please stop by our dog kennel. She'll be available for adoption anytime, Jack. Saturday, okay, Saturday at 3 o'clock, but please stop by. She's a great dog.
At 9:45, we'll have the second public hearing on CDBG. At 10:00 a.m., we'll have our first sales tax hearing. And at 11:30, we'll have domestic relations budget. Under Resolutions Number One, Job and Family Services Bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
There are no appropriations. Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners' authorized various personal actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction in Lorain County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordes?
Thank you, Commissioner Kalo. If we can squeeze it in, I would like to have a brief executive session with the Commissioners to discuss potential sale of real estate, ongoing labor discussions, specifically with the operating engineers at the bridge, and also potential new hire at the Golden Acres home. All those subjects are allowable for executive session, and I would ask that we have, at the conclusion of regular board meeting today, we go into executive session and have those talks. Thank you.
Approved waive the reading and same in the County Commissioners' meeting minutes of July 6, 2011.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Approved payment to victims of domestic violence Lorain County Safe Harbor Inc., DBA Genesis House in the amount of $27,527 as collected by Lorain County for period January 1st, 2011 through June 30, 2011, in accordance with the Ohio Revise Code 2303.201 and 3113.34 through 39.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Receive and generalize an annexation petition for approximately 1.21 acres of land in parcel 1600019104003 and 16.98 acres of land in parcel 1600003105031 and 32 from Township of Grafton to the village in accordance with Ohio Revise Code 709.16. Thomas J. Smith, Village Solicitor as Agent, and all necessary documents need to be received within 30 days. Board will make a decision, which is scheduled for August 17, 2011, the 28th day.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Support the application for the city of Illyria to apply for funding from track in the amount of $9 million and $19 million from NOACA for I-90 State Route 57 access ramps. This will alleviate congestion, ensure safety, and if approved right away, acquisition will begin July 2012, construction 2014, and complete October 2015.
Mayor Grace, any comments? Welcome this morning.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Kalo and Board of Commissioners. I seldom turn down the opportunity to address a group with a microphone. Do appreciate you placing this item on your agenda and considering it. I'll try to speak close to the microphone. There you go. Okay. I appreciate the opportunity to be here on this issue, and I appreciate the Board of Commissioners putting this on your agenda here for this morning. We are making application to NOACA for approximately $9 million. I don't know if the resolution has the numbers correct, but it's switched around. There's $19 million that we are applying to the track. Our application is due at the end of this week. The Route 57 Midway Mall project area that is in question is to make adjustments to the I-90 interchange, to make a diamond interchange, further evolution of its change from a four clover leaf, evolved to a two clover leaf. It will now be, in this project, be reduced to a diamond, which will be very much like the I-90 and Route 58 interchange. Beyond that, the plan is to remove the 49th Street Bridge, the bridge that goes over Route 57 in the center of the Midway Mall area, and to make both Griswold Road and Midway Boulevard at-grade intersections. There'll be related improvements to help that circulation be more successful. It is, overall, it's approximately a $30 million project, and obviously, those are difficult funds to acquire, so we are applying to the track. And District 3, ODOT, and Ashland has advised us that a resolution from the Board of Commissioners would be very helpful to express that this is an important project, not just to the city of Illyria, but toward Lorain County and indeed the region that I think we all believe and recognize it to be. So your passage of this resolution would be extremely helpful and appreciated, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions, Board?
I just want to comment that I think it's absolutely desperately needed. Seems to be an accident there on a daily basis, very dangerous over in that area, and I think we need to make our Midway Mall more accessible. So yeah, it is definitely a countywide issue, not just an Illyria issue, and I would hope that you receive all the funding that you need to support that project.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, Mayor, thanks for giving me a call yesterday to give me an update on that, and I agree with you and Ms. Kowski as well. This is a county project, not just the city of Illyria, and hopefully, it will bring economic development to that area and improve our mall, so thank you for working on this.
Very good. Thank you.
Agreed. I will move.
Second.
Ms. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Sheriff, authorized Sheriff to apply for the 2012 Traffic Safety Grant. This is a reimbursement grant for overtime deputies working designated traffic blitz beginning October 1st, 2011 through September 30, 2012.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Cordes, County Minister?
No additional comments this morning. Thank you.
Mr. Ennis, Assistant County Prosecutor?
I have no report this morning.
Commissioners' report.
I just want to congratulate Eric and Ashley Ortiz, whose wedding I attended this past weekend. It's probably one of the most beautiful weddings I've ever been to. It was awesome. And I also want to let everyone know that on Friday, July 15th, at 7:05, the Pipeyard Stadium located at 2840 Meister Road in Lorain will be hosting a Lorain County Veterans Night. We are honoring all those who serve in armed services. Ticket prices are $5 for adults, $4 for seniors 60 and older, $3 for children 4 through 12, and free for children $3 and under, and all veterans in uniform will be admitted free. And also, veterans not in uniform but showing proper ID will be charged an admission of only $3. So please come out and support our troops, and after the game, there will be fireworks for your entertainment. And that is the end of my report.
Thank you. We had a NOAC Executive Board meeting this week to go through some of the applications we have for the new Assistant Executive Director that's going to need to be hired with Howard Mayor retiring next year, and passing new bylaws with the voting, with the new makeup of Cuyahoga County and getting that strength up. End of my report.
Okay, well, past weekend went to Booter Drugs in the city of Avon. It's a new company that opened up, and they got five employees there starting. They worked with our economic development team. Pat, Don, you guys did a great job out there. Thank you so much for working with them and helping bring a company into Lorain County. So I just want to give praise to that department and to the gentlemen working on that. Also spoke with the veterans, went out to their facility on Thursday, took a tour there. Have a couple of different options, and we'll be working with Mr. Cordes in order to try to get those done. Just walking in is our Lorain County International Princess. Where did she go?
She's here.
Would you come up and talk? I was looking for you at the jamboree on Saturday.
Oh, I was there Saturday night.
Okay. There's a podium right there. If you could just go ahead, state your name, city you're from, and then just tell us what it was like to win or to compete in the pageant and not being crowned queen.
Okay. First, I'd like to apologize for being late. Google took me to Murray Ridge Road and actually the detention home, and I ended up in there. So they gave me directions, and now I'm here. But my name is Caitlin Nick, and I am the 2011-2012 International Queen, and I represent my Slovak heritage and community. Competing in the pageant, this is my second year in the pageant. I was a princess last year, and it was just so much fun, and I had so much joy meeting all the people I met at the nursing homes at Murray Ridge and just the princesses. And I just enjoyed it so much that the minute I walked off the stage from the pageant last year, I knew I was going to be doing it again. And I prepared myself more or less, and I was more confident with myself this year, and now I'm here as the queen.
Okay. And you're actually from what?
Amherst. I'm from Amherst. I just graduated.
You're the Lorain International Princess. There's other princesses from different cities that compete, correct?
Yeah. To be honest, I haven't seen any from other than Lorain and Amherst, though.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
But it is open to other cities to compete in it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, I want to thank you for coming out, and I gave you directions, so my directions must have been bad if I got to the detention.
I don't even remember. I don't even, it's been really busy. I've attended four festivals already, and it's just been, and then I work, so yeah.
You work?
Yeah. I work at Clearview Board of Education. Yeah.
Wonderful.
Thank you so much for coming out.
Thank you for having me.
And I asked the Board, it was my, I wasn't sure if you were coming this week or next week, so if we could just have a, drawing a blank here. Yeah, for the princess, and we can, I'll stop by and drop it off to you if that's okay?
That's fine, yeah.
Okay. Thank you again for coming out.
Thank you.
Congratulations. It's a great event. I've actually been a parade marshal with the International Festival for like 20 years now.
Oh, okay.
Been involved back when the band since we're involved in everything else. It's a great organization, do a great job.
Never been a queen?
Never been a queen.
Just a drag queen.
A drag queen man. Only relay for life.
Relay for life. He wears a dress, yeah.
And that'll be coming up a week from Saturday, the 23rd and 24th of Black River Landing.
I'll be there. She'll be there.
All right.
All right.
End of my report.
Okay. Next week at 9:30, we'll meet regular board meeting. 10 o'clock will be the second sales tax hearing. 11:30 will be the county please budget. July 26 at 9:30, we'll have a board meeting here. 11 a.m. will be the IAC meeting, 11:30 Clerk Court's Budget, and 1 p.m. Probate Budget. July 27, 9:30, board meeting will be at LCC IAC Center. August 3, 9:30, board meeting here. 10 o'clock Prosecutor Budget, 12 o'clock Coroner Budget. August 10, 9:30, board meeting here. 10 o'clock Sheriff Budget. August 17, 9:30, board meeting here. 10 o'clock Treasure Budget. 11 o'clock, the Auditor Budget. 12 o'clock, Board of Elections Budget, and 1 o'clock, the Recorder's Budget.
Got some work to do, don't we?
Yes, you do. Board Correspondent?
Move the reading be waived.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
It's 9:45. Can we go into the CDBG hearing? Linda?
Linda. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning.
Morning, Linda.
So today, we are going to have the second public hearing for the CDBG application. This public hearing is being conducted on behalf of the Lorain County Board of Commissioners in order to make application for the CDBG fiscal year 2011 formula grant. The first public hearing was held on May 23rd, where the program and general guidelines for the application were explained. Also during that presentation, the eligibility requirements and the application process were discussed. During the second public hearing, I will present the basic grant requirements and the proposed projects to be submitted in this application for CDBG formula fiscal 2011. Some of the guidelines for the application is Lorain County has permitted up to 15% of the allocation to administer the program, but not more than 20% if the administrative cost includes a fair housing activity. The county cannot exceed 15% of its total allocation of public service projects unless it requests a waiver from the state, which we have requested a waiver from the state so that we may spend 20% of the allocation towards public service. Lorain County is limited to no more than six county activities in one given year. The acquired cities are limited to no more than three activities each. The three national objectives that proposed activities must meet are: they must benefit low-to-moderate income persons, address slum or blighted areas, or meet a particular urgent community development need. There are specific activities that we are encouraged to fund. These are the homeless shelters, Meals on Wheels programs. The county's fiscal year 2011 allocation is $389,000. This includes $36,000, which is earmarked to the city of Amherst, and $32,000 to the city of Sheffield Lake. The total grant allocation is $35,000 less than was allocated for the CDBG FY10 application grant. The city of Amherst has submitted a request to utilize their money, their earmark money for home repair activities, and that is $36,000. The city of Sheffield Lake has submitted projects to benefit from their $32,000 earmark, and I'll explain in detail those projects as we go along. The process for this application is that notification and applications were for the availability or availability of the CDBG funds were mailed to the townships, villages, cities at the beginning of the year. The applications were reviewed for eligibility once they came in to our department to make sure that they met the CDBG guidelines and they were in compliance with the national objectives. This year, Lorain County Community Development received six requests for funding. Today, we present the projects for the 2011 application, and it is our desire, following the outcome of this public hearing, to submit Lorain County, to the Lorain County Board of Commissioners, an application for approval. The application will then be sent to the state, to the Ohio Department of Development, and we will get their approval. The proposed activities are: public service office on aging for their Meals on Wheels program, $43,300; public service neighborhood house homeless shelter, $30,000; public rehabilitation for the city of Sheffield Lake, $27,500; public service city of Sheffield Lake, this is for their Meals on Wheels program, $4,500; city of Amherst home repair, $36,000; Carlyle Township sewer facility improvements, $138,789; home repair countywide, $40,561; fair housing, $10,000; general administration, $58,350. That totals our $389,000 grant. All of the above activities must be completed by December 31, 2012. The city of Amherst, like I said, is going to do home repairs, three home repairs with their money. These are for low-to-moderate income families and owner-occupied houses. City of Sheffield Lake, theirs is going to be for energy-efficient improvements to their senior center. These are for a two-way electric meter for carbon credit, an electrical flow identification, and electric generation, LED lighting fixtures, and updates to the kitchen, Meals on Wheels kitchen. Brentwood Lake is the area where the storm sewer replacement will take place in Carlyle Township. And that concludes the public hearing.
Any questions from anyone? I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Ms. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Now I'll make a motion to approve the CDBG application.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Thank you, Linda.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
We've got about 10 minutes before the sales tax hearings.
Let me take a little short break.
You want to take a 10-minute break? And we'll come right back?
Yeah, because we can't start early.
Right, it's a public hearing, so we'll be back in 10. We wish to start the public hearings for the sales tax. Madam Clerk?
Notice were published in the Chronicle/Telegram Morning Journal on June 29 and July 6, 2011 to hold the first sales tax hearing, which is today, and an informational hearing will be tonight at 5:00 p.m. The second hearing will be on July 20 at 10:00 a.m. to consider the adoption of one or more of the following resolutions. One, for the purposes of supporting criminal administrative justice services in Lorain County for a five-year period, an increase of the existing tax levy pursuant to Ohio Revise Code 5739.021 by the rate of 1/4 of 1%, increasing the existing tax levy pursuant to Ohio Revise Code 5741.021 by the rate of 1/4 of 1%. Two, for the purposes of supporting criminal administrative justice services in Lorain County for a three-year period, an increase of the existing tax levy pursuant to Ohio Revise Code 5739.021 by the rate of 1/4 of 1%, and increasing the existing tax levy pursuant to Ohio Revise Code 5741.021 by a rate of 1/4 of 1%. Third, for the purpose of supporting criminal administrative justice services in Lorain County for a three-year period, an increase of the existing tax levy pursuant to Ohio Revise Code 5739.021 by the rate of 1/2 of 1%, and increasing the tax levy pursuant to Ohio Revise Code 5741.021 by the rate of 1/2 of 1%. And these will be submitted to the Board of Elections for the November 8, 2011 ballot, which will be effective April 1, 2012.
Thank you. First, I would like to state, in regards to these sales tax, these are all temporary measures, and none of them are permanent. There are three different types that we are studying, and I would probably turn over one of my Commissioners, either one of you have comments prior to us starting discussions on the sales tax?
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's clear, too, that this is going to come up for a vote in November. The voters are going to decide. This is not the Board of Commissioners. We're going to just choose one of the three options that we have on the table today, which will go on to November ballot, and then taxpayers will decide if we should have an increase or not.
All right. For clarification purposes, actually, the Board of Commissioners could put all three on the ballot by law.
Okay.
But the intent is to go through the two public hearings and then make a decision after we've heard the public's input on what is best to put on the ballot. We have to hear the public hearings before we tell them we're going to put one on for sure. Commissioner Kowski?
No, I'm just going to wait to hear what the public has to say and try to make decisions based on that.
Mr. Ennis, anything from the Prosecutor's Office in regards to the sales tax hearing?
Not at this point, Commissioner.
Okay. Well, at this point, I'd like to invite up anyone from our audience, elected official and/or resident. We just ask that you state your name and what city you're from prior to the discussion. And also, there is a sign-in sheet going around that we need everyone to sign in. Has everyone signed in?
Yes, thank you.
Everybody signed in?
It's a public group. You need to have them sign in. Robert Provo, Board.
Well, Mr. Newman, one moment. Would we like to put this up on the three proposals showing the number on the projector?
Do we have it back there?
Just so you can see the actual numbers.
Of what the three different increase options would be and where we would end up revenue-wise?
Correct.
Yeah, that would work.
Any objections?
No, not at all.
Well, are we going to be able to see the people from the public houses there speaking, or are we just going to?
No, I just want to bring it up real quickly. We won't hold it up there.
Okay.
I think everyone got a copy of this, correct, Lisa?
They're in the back.
They're in the back.
Our budget department has put together an overview of the proposed sales tax increase options and what our budgets would be anywhere from the five years through 2016 and the two different three-year options through year 2014 at a quarter percent or at a half a percent through the year 2014.
Can you read it? Can everyone read that? No?
I think everybody's getting a piece of the paper anyways.
Okay. Has everyone received a piece of the paper as two discussion points we'll have? Option one is a quarter percent increase for five years, projected revenue numbers 2012 through 2016, projected quarter percent sales tax revenue, projected expenditures with adjustments for hospitalization, utility costs, et cetera, and then projected carryovers. Option two is a quarter percent increase for three years temporary, showing again numbers 2012 to 2014. And then option three is the half a percent increase for three years with a board resolution to hold in abeyance a portion of our inside millage, again for 2012, 2013, and 2014.
An inside millage, meaning that you would get a break on your property taxes?
Correct.
Okay. For the 1.25 inside millage, Lisa, correct me if I get the number wrong. It's $38.28 per $100,000 property, correct? All right. One thing I want to point out here, too, is that the five-year projected carryover year 2015 and 16, we are looking at a deficit there as well. And then with the option three, 2013 and 14, we're looking at a deficit. Doing the sales tax increase, at least, it's my view that it's not just putting this on and not making any additional cuts. Additional cuts are still going to need to be made by the county. The problem that I'm seeing is I don't think I can get 6.25, 6.5 million for next year. So the sales tax would go to offset that, but in order to continue on, we still have to make additional cuts to the county.
Which over a three-year or a five-year time would give us time through attrition and other cost-cutting moves, getting to a balanced number.
So with that, I'll leave it up there for a few seconds. Neil, if you could walk up and take that off. Jim, go ahead and take it off the screen. Mr. Newman?
Randy Newman, Lorain, Ohio. As a taxpayer of Lorain County, I've watched with interest the parade of directors, judges, department heads do what they seem to do best. Ask for more. I was just curious which part is shortfall, budget deficit, or the county doesn't have the funds available. the funds available? They didn't understand, I did. One even said that according to Ohio Revised Code, he was entitled to the 1.5 million. We as citizens are not asking you to do more with less. We want you to do less with less. It's a mathematic and economic rule. You get, when you pay less, you get less. It ain't rocket science. The three- or five-year tax will not just disappear, it'll be a renewal, not an increase. Mr. Williams has an idea about giving back some to get some. We as taxpayers have a little trouble with the concept of government giving back. I have watched the three of you haggle over nickel and dimes. Sometimes it's amusing, most of the time it's distressing. As our commissioners, you are not conservative, liberal, Democrat, or Republican. You are Lorraine County citizens. Our senior citizens and others on fixed income have not received an increase for several years, to take another $20 or $40 out of their pocket is just asking too much. They'll have another tough decision, a mill or appeal. We have said no clearly on every sales tax issue for years. No has been the answer and again will be the answer. Imagine this is supposed to start April 1st, 2012, April Fool's Day. Don't be fooled now, because the taxpayers will no longer be fooled. Sure, you can trust the government, just ask an Indian. Regain our trust, do less with less. There should be no secret cows. We want smaller government everywhere. We will get it, with you or without you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. Anyone else wishing to address the board? It's a public hearing, we're asking for your input. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Missy Poland from Alaria. I just, I mean, I simply just wanted to say, it's just so tough for me to absorb a sales tax increase. When I look at all the government employees and I see that they have pensions, I have no pension. But my money goes to pay for your healthcare, all these county employees, it's really tough. If I don't see you guys taking some cuts out of some of your stuff, because I don't have, I have nothing. And, but yet, my paycheck goes partly to you before it even comes to me. And it just makes it really, really tough when you have no money to support another sales tax. I don't know, I guess that's all I wanted to say, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Board? Any more comments?
I was hoping we'd get some more
Yeah, feedback.
Comments from the audience and
Yeah, I guess one thing I was looking for is, we can, or as voters, you can say no, and that's your choice to basically make us go through and do additional cuts. What I'm looking for in this meeting here is to hear, out of the three options, if you wanted to see one of the options on the November ballot, which one would you like to see on there? Or would you like to have all three seen? And I understand what everyone's stating about as far as the economy and its difficult times and that, and that was one of the reasons I made that stand, that I won't enforce an emergency sales tax increase, that's got to go to the voters to decide. But at the same time, I would like to have a best option for you guys to decide on it. So if you have any feedback on that, please let me know.
Shirley?
Well, I didn't prepare to say anything. This hearing is not outlined or done as I had expected it to be. I had expected to hear more information first. I've spoken my mind about it before. I'm troubled by the two comments that we've heard so far, because I do happen to have a pension. I was a teacher and I have a small teacher's pension. I also have some social security for my husband's work. I don't see, I don't see objecting to being taxed because I, if I didn't have a pension, because, because you get one. I think everybody, everybody should, and I think that was the intent one time, of national legislation for ever, for there to be some pension arrangements for all citizens. I think as a society, we have to look out for the least of these. Some of that have that as a religious belief, but I happen to think that that's true, and I think that we, that we have, we come together in order to take care, hopefully to take care of each other. We can't take, we are not taking care of everybody, and we can't, we have not been able to do so. But I think the attitude that because I don't have it, or my salary is low, or because the Indians couldn't trust us once, is not how we should look at today's problems and how we can solve them. I think there's no que, we have, we have, I'm the lowest tax-paying county, I believe, that it's been stated before.
Yeah, if I can interrupt you, because that's going to be some of my comments after. We're actually, out of 88 counties, there is one county that is less than us, they just had a rollback of a sales tax. Stark is at five and three-quarter percent, and they're having serious financial issues. And then Lorraine County, it's 6.25 percent, there's four of us, so 83 counties are higher.
I think we've had inadequate presentation of what the problems are for the county, although the effort has been made to make them. I don't think, I think there's been adequate, inadequate publication in the newspapers and inadequate explanation. I think there's, we've never had a tax committee to work properly for this and explain it to people in smaller groups, and go out to them rather than have them come here. I just don't know how we can have a decent society without having to pay, pay for it. I think we have to be able to be sure that our, the people that are administering it are accountable and so forth and so on, but I, I just, I just don't understand the attitude that we don't have to pay for the services we get. Now, more specifically, as I understand it, we are obligated by state and other law to fulfill some of these criminal justice and court expenses that we have, and we aren't able to do what we're supposed to do. I don't know whether we can go on strike for the, to the federal government or the state government, because they aren't giving us enough money, or we have to do something to supply it. And I don't think we tax ourselves enough on the local, on the local level, or as much as we could, and I don't think we should be giving. Unfortunately, the kind of tax we have is not fair to some of the poorer people. I don't think giving up the property tax is a sensible thing to do. I think it's better to have several kinds of taxes than only one kind of tax. It may make for a little more equality. I'll probably think of something else. I was not prepared to say anything, but I'll probably think of something else as you go along.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley.
Elizabeth?
I, too, was not prepared for this kind of public hearing, thinking that it would be more informational first. Mrs. Johnson has mentioned or alluded to some of the things that I was thinking, namely, more information would be needed. Several weeks or more ago, Mr. Calo gave a quite clear presentation of budget aspects, state mandates, federal mandates, how they impinged on the budget and so forth and so on. I thought it was a very good presentation, showing how limited is your wiggle room, so to speak, for running the county. And I was hoping that the newspapers would publish it. It did not. I thought of writing a letter to the editor, but I didn't have all the facts and figures, and of course, didn't do so, to my embarrassment and frankly shame. I think that kind of information specifics, this we have to do, this is all that's left, this is so forth and so on, would be very, very helpful in informing the public. And I am thinking of asking the League of Women Voters in Oberlin and the NAACP in Oberlin to perhaps have a joint meeting on this whole matter of taxation and what it amounts to and why it's needed and so forth and so on. Whether they will or not, I don't know, but the public needs to have a lot more specific information, which perhaps you may not be permitted to give, but somebody needs to give. The whole matter of living in a society right now where T-A-X is a bad four-letter word is, I think, most unfortunate. You get what you pay for. I think our commissioners try to do a very good and a very honest job, and I think they need to be supported if the county is to manage to function as a decent society.
Thank you. I actually have some numbers from what we had done two years ago, and Elizabeth Shirley who have been here, and I don't remember if you were here or not, Mr. Newman, but when we were talking about the half a percent two years ago that we did under emergency and we put on the ballot, we talked about some of the issues that were going to have to be addressed. And all of our current proposals are, again, to just the criminal justice system, and again, the cost of the tax, a quarter percent tax based on our 2009 numbers, because we haven't had anybody do update it. A quarter percent costs the average household about $3.50 a month. At a half a percent, it's approximately $7 per month, and those are 2009 figures. Again, talking about the property tax rollback, if or not, there's a certain income level where that about evens out at, but again, it does disproportionately hit the lower income. We have cut, over the years, our county revenues dropped from 60 million to 48 million, and we're looking at additional cutbacks with what the state of Ohio has done with our local government funds. We've depleted most of our rainy day fund. We have had some carryover this year because we've been doing a good job as being stewards of the money. We've hit every office in county government. There's been pay freezes, permanent job cuts, layoffs. Some departments, you know, have talked about possibly closing a day or two a month in our discussions. Lorraine County has grown in size. The new population number shows we're over 300,000. And these dollars are going just towards criminal justice. The jail, sheriff, prosecutor, coroner, and court system, similar to what we did with the 2009, any dollars going forward will go to the same needs that were mandated to provide as Elizabeth and Shirley brought up. And as the budgetary officials of the county, we're responsible for providing a reasonable budget for the elected officials to do their job based on those mandates. And we can't talk about what the permanent cutbacks would be if we don't pass this. I hope we get through those discussions as we do all the budget hearings, because we're doing domestic relations, starting today and then every week going forward. We'll be meeting with the elected officials to find any cost savings, so. Yeah, Mr. Newman, go ahead.
If we, if we go with the quarter percent, what are we getting back out of it?
There is a rollback on the quarters.
Because your half cent is asking for more, your quarter percent goes three years. I notice in the fourth and fifth year, it has a deficit. Are you going to ask for more then?
No.
Or are you going to keep the, are you going to keep this three-year revenue and then drop it?
It would be up to the taxpayers as a temporary, if that's when we decide to put on the ballot, a three-year temporary.
No, what I'm, what I'm asking, if you want a three-year increase now, no renewal, that's the way we'd like to see it.
You can't look that far into the future, Mr. Newman, I would never commit something like that.
Well, we can't look that far in the future right now with these projected numbers either. These are guesses. We want solid, concrete, we want concrete information.
Well, they're based on sound accounting principles.
Yeah, I know, I know you have obligations, I guess is the word here.
There you go, thank you.
Okay, I know you have obligations with the Justice Center, you know, we've got to have a sheriff, I ain't going to deny that, okay? But we, if we're going to give you $7 million a year, then show us where you're going to cut to where that is in a parentheses mark over the last two, five, of the five-year plan there.
Well, what we talked about, and I think Mr. Williams brought this in his opening statements, is we will have a deficit in over the next three to five years, depending on which were to go to ballot, if any of them do. We would have to do it through addition and attrition and additional cost-cutting moves, but it would give us the window to cut that down even more than what we already have.
I'm sure that the voters here, if you ask them, will want to see one on the ballot only. And if you're, if you're going to go for one, go for the gusto, go for the half cent. I'm looking at a 1% perpetual sales tax in Lorraine City Schools now, as of today.
That's an income tax, Mr. Newman?
No, no, it's a sales tax and an income tax.
No, it was a property tax.
It's a combination, it's a combination, it's 1% perpetual and a millage rate increase of five mills.
Correct. The 1% though is income tax in the city of Lorraine, not sales tax. Sales tax is county government.
Okay, well, nonetheless, it's still a 1% increase. All right? I'm looking at that, I'm looking at, now, Lorraine City Schools wants $7 million a year out of my pocket, you want $7 million a year out of my pocket. Somebody's got to stop. Let's play big government. What are you giving us for what we give you?
Services.
Well, right, you do get the services, but we're also going to, we do have to roll back or make cuts here in the county. And I think the board agrees with that. The question at hand is, can we cut 6.5 million for next year?
We've been, we've been talking about 6.5 million for six months, and I've seen nickels and dimes, as I said earlier. I haven't seen cuts.
We, no, well, we cut a half million, though, as well, this year.
Six million and a half million, it's one thirteenth.
Mr. Newman, we have to go through, the board has to look at everything, we have to cut, make the cuts on it. Still, getting six and a half million dollars for next year is going to be a dramatic change. And then you have
Well, there, it appears there's going to be change.
Crippling, crippling county government is what the change is going to look like if we, if we have to cut 6 million.
Well, you know, if it's crippling the county government, then, then, you know, the county can't default. Only the federal government can write a check for this stuff, I understand that. But we've got to draw the line somewhere.
Right.
We've got to say, if you want the man, if you want to give us a mandate, fund it. If you want to unfund it, it ain't happening.
I've been saying
Well, somebody, somebody locally's got to say that.
They never seem to send us a check, they tell us what it's going to cost.
Exactly, they send you an unfunded mandate, I understand that. When it says unfunded, send it back. So we ain't doing it. See what happens. What are they going to do?
Sort of like trying to close our airport when they told us we couldn't. We tried that a few times with the feds, it didn't quite work.
I, I know, they say it's a regional asset. It's a regional asset, if it's a regional asset, the region should pay for it then.
We have tried, though.
Not just us. I, I know we've tried, but $6 million, we've been talking about for six months, and we got a half million of it done? Hey, guys, we can do better.
Thank you, Mr. Newman.
I think it's important to note that 70% of our budget is the judicial system, which is the sheriff, the courts, clerk of courts, prosecutor's office, and that is a mandated service. So even if, you know, where are we going to cut those, that, that $6 million? That's where the bulk of our, our, our money goes. So if we cut the bulk of our money out of the justice system, then that puts our, our county in jeopardy as far as safety goes, not just our citizens, but also our, our sheriff's deputies, which, you know, I'm not in favor of, of, of doing that, putting anybody in Nobody wants more taxes. But in my mind, a sales tax is the fairest tax. If you don't, those people that say, I can't afford a sales tax, that means that they can't afford to buy certain items, that means that they will not be spending money on a sales tax. It doesn't, doesn't apply to food, groceries, it doesn't apply to utilities, it does not apply to medication, so it's, you know, the necessities in life are not being taxed, it's the extras in life that
Utilities are taxed, they're on your bill.
Pardon me?
Your sales tax on your utility bill.
Not local.
It's not, it doesn't come to us.
The other matters are there.
Well, there's a difference, just explain the sales tax. Randy, Randy, excuse me, Mr. Newman, we have the podium, please, not from the audience. Explain the sales tax, Lorraine County is at 6.25%. The first five and a half percent goes to the state of Ohio, for those of you who don't quite understand the breakup in the sales tax. A half a percent goes to the general fund to operate county government. Out of our $50 million budget, that's about 14 or 15 million dollars, depending on collections. We also have a quarter percent that is dedicated to our county jail. Our county jail costs about $12 million to operate, and that was passed, I believe, in 95 or 96 for the county jail, after five times at the ballot. Well, the jail costs 12 million to run, so the county general fund is still using up bet, almost another quarter percent to fund the rest of the jail. So when you look at sales tax, and what you're talking about on utilities, those would be the state sales taxes. The local taxes don't affect those, so those aren't a boon
Does the county receive sales tax money back from state?
Well, and they just cut it, that was the agreement, correct, Mr. Newman, but from the podium, please.
Go ahead, Neil, your turn.
Neil, you'd like to address the board. Now, are you the Assistant Commissioner Williams, or are you the Amherst Township trustee this morning?
Commissioner Calo, I'm speaking as a citizen of Lorraine County and an Amherst Township trustee, in terms of leadership position here. I do agree with some of the previous speakers from the public that it would have helped if there was a more formal presentation in terms of information upfront, as Commissioner Kokoski has said, nobody wants to pay extra taxes. You know, that impacts everybody, we all pay it. But at the same time, when you ask people, other than maybe a few, most of them all want the services that are provided. And the services, we're down in Lorraine County, pretty much the bare bones now of the mandated services. Transportation has been decimated, there is no expectation of that coming back, even if the public does approve an increase in sales tax, there's no way that the transportation can be restored, not in the near term, not in the foreseeable future. And as has been stated, even with this being passed, there's still going to have to be additional cuts. But to get to the specifics of the three options that the board has available here for consideration, I would strongly suggest that only one be put on the ballot. I think if three are put on the ballot, that's a guarantee that it is definitely going to fail. And it's going to be a slim probability of passing any tax increase in the current situation. But I think that the best option, my personal view, would be to use the option that's going to be the half percent with the corresponding reduction in the property taxes. And do this, ask the voters to approve this just on a temporary basis of the three years. Now, the logic in that is that in the property tax issue, particularly for the individuals that are on a fixed income, which Now, the logic in that is that in the property tax issue, particularly for the individuals that are on a fixed income, which is a portion of our society, that it gives them the option and their choice as to how they expend their funds when they go through discretionary funding on things that have sales tax applied to them. And as been pointed out, the sales tax does not impact your groceries, it does not impact your medical purchases, it does not impact your insurances, it does not impact what you have, your reduction in Medicare, your Social Security, it doesn't impact your utilities that you're going to pay. And if you are still paying a mortgage or rent, it's not impacting those types of expenditures, which are the raw basics that people must pay to get their food, shelter, and their health. So that gives those individuals a chance to make that decision. If they have that property tax, they have no choice. They must pay that property tax, or they risk the chance of losing their shelter. So I would prefer option three, with the half percent, with the reduction of the inside millage by the one and a quarter mils. Now, let's look at that. It's been stated that the tax settlement department has determined that for a hundred thousand dollar home value, that will save the taxpayer in terms of inside millage of thirty-eight dollars and, what is it, twenty-eight cents?
Yes.
Okay, so if you take that at the half percent sales tax, that's equivalent to taxable, sales tax purchable items of seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars a year to offset that. Now, people got to figure out what is their home value, that's on a hundred thousand dollar home value, which is probably going to impact people that are on that lower economic scale, and people that still own their home and on a fixed income. And taking that particular thing, you divide that even by twelve, because some people may not know what they do on an annual basis. That's six hundred and thirty-eight dollars a month, a purchase that you're making outside of your groceries, outside of your home costs, outside of your utilities. I think that's going to impact a good percentage, so I think that's going to be very helpful for those that are on the lower income scale or are on fixed income. In terms of making this temporary, and what are we going to do since every option that's shown ends up showing that you're still going to run in the negative? It's already been said, you have to make more cuts. But this doesn't show, there is going to be a new revenue stream that will come to Lorain County, also to the municipalities. Unfortunately, as a township leader, townships get nothing. That's out of the gambling revenue. Now, the state of Ohio Office of Budget Management, in their preliminary estimates that were done when this was put on the ballot, estimated that Lorain County, the county commissioners, for their general fund, would receive eight point seven million dollars on an annual basis when the gambling institutions are up to full operation. Now, we can all argue how accurate that was, whether that's a correct number, whether it'll ever meet the ultimate and what that was based, but those are the factual numbers that are available today.
They've been updated since, Neil, not to stop you from where you're going to, but with video lottery terminals and the cutback in the amount of machines we're going to have, they've gone from eighteen thousand down to eleven thousand. We're dealing with this at the Commissioners Association and the new deal that the governor worked out with them, and not to slow down your report, but to bring that up. That number's probably less than half of that because the counties will receive nothing from the VLTs, video lottery terminals at all. And that's going to impact, and the casinos have also downsized the amount of seats, machines they plan on having from eighteen thousand to eleven thousand.
Well, I appreciate that, Commissioner Kalo, and I really don't have a formal presentation. I did not intend to speak here, but I think it was important that these facts get out there, since there has been no formal informative session, but there were some documents available for the public, and that was good. But I do believe a better presentation and informing people as to what's going on, not only those that come to this meeting, because it's difficult for many of the voters to come to this meeting, but for getting it out televised for the public to see, and also for the news media to pick up. But let's use your numbers there, going from the eighteen thousand, eleven thousand terminals, who knows if that's correct? Do that proportionally. You bring that eight point seven down to five point three million, it doesn't matter. We're talking millions here, and that almost offsets the deficit. So I think it's important that the public recognize that, because with that revenue stream coming in, three years from now, this board can make that decision. Do they put this temporary tax, if the voters approve it, up for renewal, or they just let it lapse? And to your point, Commissioner Kalo, you can't predict too far out, that is true. But now you'll be in a position, you will see what that tax revenue is coming in as it starts ramping up, and you can make a more informed decision as to what this board is going to do. So that's the reason that this was decided to make a temporary. It'll be more palatable to the public, and you can make an informed decision if you continue that. You know, there's no decision, there's no purpose here on this board, or anybody trying to deceive anybody or pull the wool over their eyes. The information's there, it may not have been presented in the best light, but it's a fact of the matter, we've got to do it. And as far as those basic services, you know, one, again, transit's pretty much gone, don't expect it to come back. We are now talking about our courts, we're talking about our jail, we're talking about our sheriff and policing services, which impacts all Lorain County citizens. And if we have to make a wholesale change at the county level, there's going to be serious reductions. And then people are going to have to deal with that, but they have to recognize you can only pay or provide the service for the funds that are available. So it is going to be difficult, and you'll do that. You'll have no choice, you have to provide a balanced budget. So those cuts are going to occur, and you're going to see the court system slowing down. I don't know what'll happen in the prosecutor's office, or I think they've shrunk quite a bit as it is now. But there's going to be continual shrinkage that's going to happen here, and it's going to be very difficult in the future. So those are the decisions that the public's going to have to make, but it's still going to be the voter's decision. And if they choose that in their current situation they want to vote it down, that's their right, that's the system we're in. But let's make sure that it's objective as to what's being put out there in terms of the information. And I know it's on short notice, perhaps, at the next sales tax hearing, you know, a better job can be done in putting together the information for the public. Thank you.
Thanks, Neil.
Brought up a lot of good information. Another hopeful revenue source that should, in the future, maybe when we start looking at the parentheses of the deficit. A few years ago, we were making about six million dollars more in interest income. You know, now that the interest rates have dropped so much, we were making about eight million in interest income. Now we're lucky to make two million dollars in interest income a year. So eventually, the interest rates will start climbing back up, and hopefully, we will make additional revenue back to where we were back in about two thousand and eight, I believe, when we peaked. So we do have lights at the end of the tunnel, as Mr. Lynch said. You know, we have the gambling prospects, we have interest income, you know, you never know, the economy could very well turn around and make things a lot better for us. So that's why I'm very much in favor of the temporary tax. Maybe we will not have to have a renewal, hopefully we won't have to have a renewal. And I also like option three, where we do roll back the property taxes. But I would really like to hear from the residents to see if that's something that they would like to consider as well.
I want to go to one thing about the trust in the government, and that, I never, prior to this, I was never in public office, been always in the private sector. And one of the reasons I actually came up with the three years is because that's in two thousand and fourteen. I don't know if I'm going to run or not in there, but if I would decide to run, that's going to come up when I'm campaigning. And one thing I'm going to make sure about is, I don't go back on my word now, but as, you know, people look at government politicians, do you really think I'm going to go back on my word during a campaign year as well? So that's why I was looking at the three years. Now, I can tell you right now, if the board would try to go back and rescind the tax, I'm going to speak up against it. I don't think they would do that. I'm going to be here to make sure that they're going, that we're going to go through and make the cuts that we need to. The problem that I have right now is, I can't see how we're going to cut six and a half million dollars. You can say that we've been doing it, going back and forth for six months on this, you're right. Should we cut more? Absolutely. I don't think the board's going to disagree with that. We have to cut it. That's why we have the divisions coming in here. After this meeting, we have domestic relations. We're going to sit down, we're going to go through a ninety-one-page presentation by them to hear about their budget and what possibly they can change. It's not going to stop with them, it's going to go through every elected office. And then prior to November, we're going to have to make cuts, because if we don't do anything, we know it's not going to pass. It's a slim chance of not passing now, but we have to go through, we have to make the cuts. But at the same time, if we want to have a county that we're proud of, we do need some type of assistance. But that's going to be left up to the voters to decide, so.
Shirley.
Neil is a very smart man, he made a very good presentation. And I agree with everything he said except the option that he's for. I really would be, I think, for option number one on the sheet of paper, and against dropping the property tax, because I think that the different, more different kinds of taxes that people have to pay, the fairer it probably is. I can't imagine that somebody that owns a hundred thousand dollar house hasn't already thought about the fact that they're going to have to pay, round it off to forty dollars a year. If my house is worth a hundred and fifty thousand, I would have to pay sixty thousand, sixty dollars a year, I mean. And I would think that if my house is worth a hundred and fifty thousand, I should, I would have planned and been able to do that, probably. I think the fact that you've brought up that option, that possibility of dropping the income tax, and have emphasized it so much, and two of you have been for it, has set the public to think that that's a great idea, that will really save them money, and they may even wish that they could even, they'll vote against income tax too. But I think we need some increase in tax, there's no question about it. I'm sorry that the property tax has been put in there as an equalizer, I think it would be better to go straightforward with what we need. And I think it's too bad that we haven't, but I think you're probably going to go for the last one, nothing much I can do about it.
It's not really an equalizer as much as it is a chance to give people discretion and where their money goes. It's, we don't know for sure that it will actually save them money, Shirley. You know, it's just the fact that we, the money on the sales tax is discretionary, the money in your property taxes is a for-sure amount that you have to spend.
Well, and with that too...
Well, it's discretionary to the sense that you bought that property and you had a reason to do it and you thought you could do it. That's the sad part for people who have lost their jobs or had their salaries decreased.
Right. Well, even people, like, when I had spoke about the county losing money on interest income, there's a lot of people on fixed incomes that relied on their interest as part of their monthly income, that now they don't see that, just like we don't see it. So they're hurting, just like the county's hurting.
Yeah, I understand that argument, and I understand my own. I just feel the more different kinds of taxes we have, the better off we are for, that makes it more equal for people.
Well...
You do realize we're not eliminating the full amount of property taxes, they still are paying property taxes, just not our portion, okay?
And I want to make sure too, this came up, it doesn't affect the schools.
Right.
This is...
Okay.
Okay, and Cuyahoga County is seven and three-quarters, okay? If we raise it up a half percent, we're still going to be one percent lower than them. They come over here, I have friends that live over there and work with them, they come over and they buy their washers and dryers and that here to save money. I'd rather have those individuals living in Cuyahoga County helping pay taxes and giving a reduction in the property tax. That's the reason I brought it up. Is it going to be a huge cost savings on the property tax? No, it's thirty-eight dollars per hundred thousand. But it's giving you the option to reduce a property tax which you could never touch before. And if you don't need to purchase things, you don't have to use the, or spend the money here, or buy those consumable goods. It's a consumable tax. If you buy things, you get taxed on it, if you don't, you don't get taxed. I think it's a fair tax, I think that's the way it should work. But we're going to go through these other hearings, and then we'll make a decision on that and which direction we're going to go.
Yes, sir. My name is Ron Limpach, and I live in Amherst, and I'm retired. I, last night, was trying to work out some figures, and the information I had just didn't tell me enough. And I basically have some questions for you. Is the quarter tax going to bring in about three million six a year?
No. Seven to seven and a half million dollars. Seven million is probably a fair figure.
Okay. And one of the things, just as we were talking, that caught my attention was, somebody said forty dollars a year for a hundred...
Hundred thousand.
Yeah, hundred thousand.
One of the proposals is a rollback in the inside millage that's paid to the county.
Okay.
And for every hundred thousand value is just under forty bucks.
You know, I almost had a laugh, because compared to the school taxes, forty dollars is dropping a bucket, you know, and that. But even still, you're looking at that seven dollars that the average family's going to be spending a week.
No, per month, sir, not to interrupt you. At a half a percent, the average cost to a household in Lorain County is about seven dollars or more per, seven dollars more per month.
Okay, so that's, they're going to be paying eighty-four dollars a month in sales taxes, where the hundred thousand dollar family's going to be only getting a forty dollars off. That doesn't sound like a bargain. And I think you're doing a good job running the county. If I had to pick of the three, I would pick the three-year quarter percent. And one of the reasons for that is if after three years, you're not doing a good job, we can go and vote again, where...
Right.
I wouldn't want to get stuck with that half percent. And again, with the half percent, you're talking about giving that to the general fund. And I'm sorry, I had to go to the Justice Center to check out, to make sure it was still there before I came to this meeting. So I think that the general fund is probably a hard thing for you guys to try to equate what else is going to go there. And like I say, I'm sorry that I wasn't here.
It's fine.
But that's, my own recommendation is quarter percent for three years.
The half percent's also for three years.
I know.
Okay.
But that money is going to be going to the general fund too.
No.
No, I'll go to the Justice System.
Everything is to the Justice System, sir, and I'm with you. I looked at a quarter percent, it's a straight number, either three-year or five-year. And then the public has the ability to tell us whether we're going to renew or not, and then bring up some of the other issues that may come forward in regards to revenue, whether it be the casino numbers or interest income, as Commissioner Kokoski brought up. So that's where I would lean to, is the quarter percent. It's easier to talk about the quarter percent, twenty-five cents on a hundred dollars in discretionary spending, durable goods spending.
Yeah, at a quarter percent, you're going to pay forty-two dollars a year for the average family.
Yep.
So you're looking at, basically, you pay two dollars, or it's an offset, you end up paying two dollars, but you're getting a reduction on the property tax for a hundred thousand. Now, if you have a two hundred thousand dollar house, then yeah, you're going to get more money you make out in the deal. But those individuals also pay more.
I question that too, though, because, you know, the more money you got, the more you're going to spend. So the more sales tax you're going to ring up.
Right.
But this also goes for commercial use too, so which could bring in economic, hopefully, some...
Ron, what is your last name? I didn't catch it.
Limpach.
Can you spell that?
L-I-M-P-A-C-H.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your input.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments about where we think we're heading, or discussion points, or answers to the audience? Commissioners? Here we go, someone else to join us.
My name is Dave Weber. I'm a resident of North Ridgeville, been a resident of Lorain County since before nineteen seventy. I was a business person until I retired, and I had to transfer the taxes that I collected from my customers to the different tax agencies. Never liked doing that, because I figured that the cost of my products and services went up every time the taxes went up. Didn't make me happy. If I'm not mistaken, the very first original sales tax was a temporary tax many, many years ago. And when I became a consumer back in the fifties and I was able to go out and make my own purchases, the sales tax was like two percent.
That was the state sales tax, correct? Because Lorraine County didn't have one until eighty-five.
See, you didn't even have a tax back then. So tell me, all the taxes are, are tied to a percentage, so we can't use inflation as a reason for creating a tax or a tax increase. Why do we need more money now than we did ten years ago, than we did twenty years ago, than we did forty years ago? Why do we need more percentage of the taxpayers' money? What are we really supplying the public? That you need more of their earned money, a bigger percent of their earned money? What are you doing for it? What is the government doing for the people?
Can I answer some of those?
I wish you would.
The reason being, well, just costs of doing business is going to, as you were in business, you knew the additional cost for your tasking ten or twenty years ago. You couldn't buy a new car today for what you paid for one in nineteen ninety-two.
A dollar per dollar, yes, I can.
Dollar for dollar maybe, but I'm saying it's still, it's a higher amount of money.
It's a higher amount, it's the same percentage or a less percentage to buy that car now than it was forty years ago.
Well, at county government, our role as county officials, we provide services and those services are mandated us based on what the state legislature does and the federal government does. And as they change rules or give us more laws, the mandate, and I'll take one that's real simple, concealed carry weapon. Our amendment gives us the right to bear arms in our country. But when the state legislature passed the concealed carry weapon law, it had to be administrated. They gave it to county governments, the county sheriff in particular, to administrate that. So everybody has the right to be tested and registered and carry a concealed weapon. They take a fee for it. I think it's forty or fifty bucks. We don't keep any of that. That goes right back to state government, but it required three employees at the sheriff's department to do that full-time. So now we are moving employees to take care of concealed carry weapon, which are no longer doing the duties they were doing prior to. So either that's increased manpower or less services. Sexual offense notification. As they changed the rules from five hundred foot to a thousand foot, if a sexual offender moves in your neighborhood, that came from the state legislature down to county government. The sheriff's supposed to provide those notifications. So now instead of within five hundred foot of a certain resident, residents where a sexual offender's moving in, now they have to notify within a thousand foot. It takes more bodies to perform those services. So the more services that the residents ask for, or the more laws they want to make it a safer place for us to live, there's a cost comes with that. When the state passes those laws, they send them down to us, but they never sent us a check. I ask all the time and I kid with Mr. Newman about this. He said, "Ask for a check or don't do it." We don't have a choice. We have to perform those duties, Mr. Weber. So when you're saying, "What are we doing for you?", everything that the public has asked, through laws being passed, we are performing for you.
At a, at a percentage that is actually feasible, can you, can you say that the percentage of the taxes you're taking and the services we're getting are that much better than they were before?
I wouldn't say they're better. I couldn't tell you that, but I would say we are doing more services with less money and less personnel than ever before because we're required to perform those services.
I doubt that.
Well, I'm not the most politically correct guy up here, so. To your point, I mean, there have been some bad decisions. It's not by, you know, I, I started this year and, not even with them. But one of the biggest, worst decisions we made is if we opened up the blinds and we looked across, is that Justice Center. It's a drain on the county and that, and prior to that, they had a twenty million dollar surplus. They went through and they, they spent, they got a nice palace over there and that's not a reflection on the judges and that, because the board approved it. And it was bad decisions made on there and we actually, yeah, I understand why people are weary about what's going to happen. We had one commissioner that went to prison for it. But yeah, there are bad decisions that were made in the past and now we have to deal with them. I think everybody knows that I want to go through and I want to cut out as much as we can, and I'm not a person for tax increases. But at the same time, it does come to a point where we do need to have the revenue in order to operate. You know, you can't cut yourself into being profitable as a business. But what we do need is, we do need to have revenue that comes in and we need to be as a board making decisions to try to correct the, the ones that were bad in the past. So to your point, yeah. Service, better? Probably not. But we have to turn things around and I don't see any way of turning it around without getting revenue. I mean, would you agree with that or no?
Not really I wouldn't, because it, it seems to me that the more revenue the, the general public bestows upon the tax spending politicians, the more they spend. There's no incentive to spend less. There's only incentive to spend more. We give you more, you take more. When times are good, economy is good, people are buying a lot of products, spending a lot of money, your income, your take, the government take on taxes increases.
Right.
And you have this newfound pile of money in front of you. Let's spend it. There's never an offer to give it back. I don't ever remember any taxing group saying, whether it's state, federal or local, gee, look at how prosperous we are. We have this big business come in here, it's, give us a lot of tax money. Let's give it back to the people. You don't give it back. You never do. You find another place to spend it. And that's what's offending the taxpayer. Our percentage of tax that we have to pay goes up and up and up. It never goes down.
And I, I agree with you to a point. When you look at, in general, politicians and that, what you have to look at is you have to look at who's representing you right now. When you talk about Washington, I absolutely agree with you. They're spending way too much money there. No doubt about it. But when you get into the local settings and that, I live in the city of Amherst. I think the local, I think the mayor there, Mayor Taylor, city council does a wonderful job with the amount of money. I think they're good stewards of that. I wouldn't lump them into being just politicians. They're good individuals who are working for the city. You have other cities like that. Question is, really, do you believe that this board up here, myself included, is going to do the right thing, go through and make the cuts that we need to? But what I'm telling you is we don't have enough revenue at this time to continue on with the services that we want to provide and that we're going to have to make dramatic cuts. That's why I'm proposing, or the board's proposing, a three-year and a five-year to get us through it. Now, at the end of that, if we didn't do it, then yeah, you're right. You know, shame on this board because we didn't make the cuts.
I agree that, that Lorraine County does a better job than, than our adjacent counties. I, I'm proud that I'm from Lorraine County. I think that we get more services for what we are spending. But that doesn't mean that I'm totally happy with how much money we're spending. I still think there's room for adjustment within every corporation or business or whatever or government that, that can look at how much they're spending and what they used to spend and what they have to spend today and make some cuts. And I just hope that, that, that the county commissioners are doing that for the residents of Lorraine County.
And I think this board agrees that, and if I'm wrong, that we do need to make cuts. We can't, if we get the sales tax increase, it's not that we're going to just sit here and say, "Hey, happy times", because if we don't make the cuts, looking off those numbers, we see a deficit coming. We have to make additional cuts. We have to become more efficient on the ways we do things in this county. We have to bring different departments together. That's why I have domestic relations over here today. And that we're going to have the common pleas next week and every other elected official. And then we're going to sit down in August and we're going to talk about ways that we can either increase revenue or reduce costs. The issue that I have right now is six and a quarter, six and a half million dollar deficit, trying to get through that amount for next year and then two thousand thirteen.
In, in your business, do you have your employees incentivized in order to spend less money to, to conserve more on their purchases and their operations that they do? Whereas government is the opposite. If, if you give a, a department a budget for a year, are they encouraged to save some of that and give it back?
Yes, absolutely.
No, not really. From what I understand about government, what they do is if they don't spend it all, they're not getting as much next time.
No, that's not how we do things here.
No, it's not how we do things here. We've leaned that out over the years, Mr. Weber.
They get the same budget, even though they gave back last year. They still get the same budget. We don't reduce their budget by what they expended.
And I, I can attest to that as far as seeing a reduction in their budgets even. And when we have the budget hearings coming up, you're going to hear that as well as far as what the other departments have done. Now, with that said, that doesn't mean just because you went through and you cut five or ten percent and you saved the county money, well, county's still hurting, so we're going to still have to go back and look at ways to cut more. And I think this board with the sheriff is doing a good job as far as looking at consolidating nine-one-one in the sheriff dispatch to get a cost savings there. And it's about, what, seven hundred thousand?
About four hundred thousand with the trade-out for a couple more deputies, because we understand the idea of safety also.
Right. And if we didn't give the deputies, it would go up, what?
About seven hundred thousand.
Seven hundred thousand dollars here. But at the same time, we talk about service. I, I've driven to Rochester and, you know, to Columbia Station and that. I know how long it takes to get there. And if you need a sheriff deputy out there, you know what? If they're out in patrolling in Rochester, we need a couple more to be stationed in order to help the people in Amherst Township, Columbia Station and the surrounding townships. At the same time, I don't want you to think that we're saying, "Well, if you don't pass this, we're going to cut the sheriff's deputies", because we're not, we understand that the sheriff's deputies are needed. We're looking for other ways to go through and make the cuts. And with that said, we even, the board has even said that we're putting the sheriff deputies last on the chopping block as far as nice to have, because they're not mandated by the state to have them. So we are trying to make the cuts. Do we need to do more? Yeah. Do we need to improve? Absolutely. But at the same time, I'm telling you right now, I can't cut six and a half million dollars. I mean, what, why, let me rephrase it. To cut six and a half million dollars is going to change the county government dramatically on that. And that's what we're going to give the option to the voters. If you, if you want to see that dramatic change, then you have your vote to do that.
I am opposed to any increase of, of any taxes.
Okay.
But I am impressed that you have not made it a emergency tax and you are going to put it in front of the voters to decide. That, that pleases me that way.
Yeah.
But the tax itself doesn't.
And I understand that.
And actually, it is an emergency. It really is an emergency, but we all decided that we would not impose it. That we would hopefully give the residents a chance to get educated and see the real, true need for the tax. Mr. Williamson mentioned the Justice Center. They, back in the day, Ted and I never had the opportunity to have such great carryovers, but they put down like twenty-five million dollars cash down on the Justice Center. When Ted and I became commissioners, we had to start paying one point eight million dollars on, on debt service for the Justice Center. So, you know, and then a few years back, the, the state decided to, oh no, they didn't decide. We had the shift in population and we lost three point five million dollars every year because more, there's more people in the cities than in the county. So, and then the six million dollars, like I said, with interest income, you just can't make up eight million dollars in, in a couple of years. And we've been cutting and cutting and cutting for how many years now? Since we've been here practically. I think we had like an eighteen million dollar-
Carryover when we started.
Figure, no, the figure that we've cut total.
I thought it was about twelve million.
Twelve million dollars in cuts, but another six million dollars, it just, I mean, it's, it's all about safety and, and we cannot jeopardize our safety. How are we going to bring in new businesses if they know Lorraine County is not a safe place to live and, and do business?
And I remember-
It's not going to happen.
I remember the sheriff coming in. One of the, in, you know, transit, okay, I agree. That's not economic development. But having road patrol in, in, in this county is economic development. We have large areas that could bring in economic development. We're seeing in a couple different townships, Columbia Station being one of them. So it's, we definitely need to service and I'm going to say here again, six and a half million dollars is going to be very difficult not to cut. But at the same time, you are going to get the option on it. And I just, we may, you may have said it already, but which option would you prefer? One, two or three? Just curious.
I think the, the quarter percent for three years.
Quarter percent for three years? Okay.
And I like to address-
That's the one I want to vote against rather than-
Right.
Well, just to address some of your concerns, and Commissioner Kokoski said it very well. You were saying how government would give you more money and you spend more. In our case, our government has lost money through some moves that were made, the local government fund in particular, the locally negotiated one, the population shifted and went to eighty-one or eighty-two percent. Most people lived in the cities. We took a three and a half million dollar hit to our revenue.
Yearly.
Yearly.
From, from what I read in the newspaper, there's not a government agency around that has lost.
Oh, no, everybody else gained money.
They're always lo- losing.
No, everybody-
The state loses, the feds lose, the cities, the, everybody is losing revenue. And yet the taxpayers are paying more. Something doesn't balance.
Well, in regards to the county, and I'm speaking for the county, our three and a half million dollars that we didn't receive anymore was redistributed to everybody else in the county.
The cities and townships and villages.
Then it should be easier for you to cut if it's been redistributed, money that you would have normally taken in.
It went to the city.
We had to make the cuts to get, the cities took those monies, the bulk of those monies.
Right. We didn't get it. It gave, it went to somebody else, not us.
Right. So then you can, you can cut from that city as far as some of the services you provide for them.
We don't provide anything for the cities.
You provide county government, Mr. Weber.
No, nothing within, you don't provide anything within the city of North Ridgeville?
No.
No, we oversee their CDBG to a degree because of their status-
So you're strictly in, in the rural areas then as far as your expenditures?
No, we're county government. We are in charge of, and I'll go through the departments real easy. We have to run the domestic relations court by law, which is domestic, and they'll be here if you stick around for the budget hearing. We have to run a court of common pleas, which is the felony court. I believe North Ridgeville is in the Aliri Muni Court, where that's where the misdemeanors are, and then those get moved up to felons. We have to handle all the felony cases in our county. We operate the probate court, which is adoptions, wills, estates, those types of marriage licenses. The county has to operate that for all county. We're not geographic to a city providing a service. We provide to everyone in the county, rural and urban.
Board of Elections.
We have to fund the board of elections for the right to vote. We have to fund the county jail.
When you, when you fund these justice departments and so forth.
Pardon me?
They, when you fund these, these different departments, the cities contribute nothing towards that funding? This is strictly county funding?
That's the county funding. The sales tax and any fees.
But there's absolutely no money comes from the city to, to operate those?
Comes from the residents through the sales tax and a small portion of property tax. No, we actually fund the municipal courts, the-
A portion of their salaries.
Right, we fund a portion of their salaries, our forty percent share.
By law.
For all municipal courts, which is over a million dollars a year, we're mandated to provide.
So far, you're probably doing a good job. Just keep your pencils real sharp, that's all.
Well, we're trying, but those, that's what we do.
Indigent attorney fees, one point, over, what, one, over a million dollars a year mandated, you know, they're, it just goes on and on.
People don't quite understand our county, what county actually does for them.
And I'm sure I don't understand.
Because we don't do your streets or your parks or, we do running of a criminal justice system and we collect taxes.
Yeah. Over in the old courthouse building, I walked through it on Monday and they were doing drug screening. They had over a hundred people in line for that, or coming through on just that Monday. So that's a service that we're providing on there. And, you know, that's something that's out of sight, out of mind, but it's keeping the area safe and, you know, it's helping with the courts and that as well. So it's just things like that, you know, that you may not think about, the, with the sheriff, you know, sexual pedophiles doing dare programs, going through, doing subpoenas as well, correct Jerry? Things that they also help out with the cities that comes back on the county that we have to pay, so.
Thank you for your enlightenment.
I'm glad you asked a lot of questions because you're not the only one that doesn't understand or, or know. So it was good dialogue. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Weber.
Commissioners? Commissioner, if I will, I just, you know, I can't answer for all the departments, but Commissioner, if I will, I can't answer for all the departments, but I just want to give you an example of some of the things that one department, the prosecutors, has to do now that we didn't have to do 40 or 50 years ago. Like they mentioned, we now have to notify and keep track along with the sheriff's department of sexual offenders. That's because the people out there have said they want to keep and protect our children from these kinds of predators. We didn't have to deal with things like the internet years ago where these people can instantly get into your home and prey upon your children. You know, those are the kinds of problems you never had to deal with before. By law now, we have to provide a victims' witness program. Whenever there's a criminal charge, we are required to notify the victims of when we go to court and what we're doing. That's something that wasn't there 40, 50 years ago. As I already mentioned, indigenous attorney fees, they never used to have to be paying for defendants, for their investigators, for their experts and that sort of thing. We now have to pay for all that thing. The cost of running a jail. We now have, you know, the hospitalization. I mean, I'm sure you recognize how hospital costs have gone up disproportionately to other costs. We have to pay to take care of prisoners when they're in their jail. And if we just don't take care of them and they have a medical problem, we're going to get sued for that and it costs us even more. We are required now to provide notices for collection of child support because there's laws passed that require us to do things to help spouses get their support for their children. In our Children's Services Agency, you know, 50, 60 years ago, kids that were the victims of abuse or broken homes were just thrown in some home, just given to whoever. Now, there's all kinds of regulations designed to protect those people, but you have to have people go out and inspect these homes, make sure, you know, it all costs money and those are all services that you never had to do before. We've talked for months and months about stormwater management and the requirements from EPA. Our county has dramatically changed from 50, 60 years ago when it was substantially rural. It is now substantially urban. That means we have to do things to protect our water system. We have to do things to protect our air that you don't, you didn't have to do in a rural society. And, you know, I'm just telling you from one little department, that's the way it is with all our departments. There's just, you know, and I think we all know that we are facing the baby boom generation. I mean, we have people that are getting older, a substantially disproportionate proportion of the population who are no longer wage earners than we used to have. That, that is a burden that comes down upon government. And I mean, you know, you could go talk, if you come in here and listen to these budget hearings we're going to be doing over the next few months, you're going to hear every one of our departments come in here and tell you all the things that we now have to do that we didn't use. And I see my bosses just come in here, you know, "Mr. Newman, you asked about, you know, what effect is this going to have?" I counted in our office two years ago, we had 33 prosecutors. Right now, I figure we're going to have 19 of those same people now.
So, crime is dropping, right?
We've, well, there's the other thing I was going to mention. Crime, you know, we deal with drug dealing. You remember the drug dealing of the massive amount that we have these days 50 years ago? But, you know, we're, right now, I think I counted, we're going to have 19 of the 33 lawyers that we used to have. Now, we've replaced some of those, about half of them, but with less experienced attorneys. You know, we're losing a value here. And, you know, I'm sure Dennis is going to be in here telling you the problems we're looking at, but, you know, we've been told that my staff is going to be cut. I'm going to have half the staff I had next year. And understand, the staff I have now is the same size it was in the 1980s. We have not increased our civil staff.
I may have the solution, Dennis, I mean, Jerry.
But I just want to let you know that there's things we do that we're not going to be able to do. When somebody in the township, you know, puts a junkyard or automobile shop or porn shop next to your house and you want, who do you call to do something about? You call the prosecutor's office, right? We're not going to be there.
What do political parties do wrong? Who do they call?
We're not going to be there, Mr. Newman. And that's going to be the same with crimes. With vandalism and theft at your businesses, our criminal department is going to have to make a choice of either just slapping these people on the wrist or not letting them go or just not prosecuting them at all. So, I mean, it's going to be a change in life here.
Well, even a non-prosecution money, I know that. All right. Laura, you said earlier that we have $2 million in interest income. Where's the $100 million?
The money that we make that interest on?
Yeah.
It's all the money that's collected for the whole county MRDD.
If we get $2 million in interest income, there's $100 million somewhere.
But it's not our money. It's not our, it's, we bring that money in through all the taxes that are collected throughout the whole entire county, but it's not our, it's not our money. It's sitting there waiting to go back out.
What the agreement is, is since the county does all the collections, we get the interest off of that for doing all of the collecting.
And then the course of the year then? This is just like a rollover?
Right. And then rolls back out.
It's just on your checking account essentially, is what you're saying?
Correct.
About a million five it just got lowered to, didn't it, Lisa? Did Dan Teller just owe a million five in interest income this year? He did lower it.
From $8 million to?
We still doing the 1.8 million service on the Justice?
Yes, it just started a few years ago.
That was when they, when they put the 25 million, they took out on a loan and that's the 1.8 million. Is that an interest payment or is that interest in principle?
That's interest in principle.
Okay.
You know, I don't think a lot of people know this too. The commissioners oversee the general budget. That's one part of the county. We have a large, the county has a larger budget as well. I'm going to have Mr. Cordez talk about it. Jim, go ahead. What is the total county budget?
Well, the total county budget for all agencies, departments, federal spending on program spending, state program spending is in excess of about $500 million.
Okay. See, we're seeing one-tenth of that on this paperwork here.
Right. You know, a lot of people focus in on the general fund because it's an easy concept to evaluate and understand for them. But the board of commissioners technically is the budgetary authority for, you know, well over a half a billion, a half a billion dollars. And of course, the tax commission oversees more than that because they, and Jerry, I don't know if you're still on that, they actually go over the schools and cities and so forth.
So, we need, we don't need a public hearing. We need a commissioner hearing. We need y'all to get, like I said, like I said the last time, we've got to sell it and you've got to sell it right or it won't pass.
Right.
I mean, we need a commissioners' hearing. We don't need a public hearing. We can stand here BMW, bitch-bumming, complaining, but it ain't going to do any good.
Well, let me ask you. You've been here. Are you starting to see that we can't cut to 6.5? That it'd be very difficult to do it?
The 6.5 is going to be hard to find and 46 million, but out of 500 million, it's going to be easy to find.
Oh, we don't get all that money. That's not our money to spend.
It's all there. It's all there.
No, it's not our money to spend. We're not allowed to spend it.
Well, let me say this. A lot of it is money that is programmatic and is very narrowly defined and is restricted funds. Now, with regard to the interest income.
Are these quote-unquote funded mandates then?
Some, well, some of them are funded. You know, some of the money is, but it's very narrowly defined of what the scope of service is it has to be used for. The, with regard to the interest income, I think the portfolio, the last time I saw it, about $76 million that is on a constant money in, money out basis, but it's.
Just like a business, good cash flow.
Right. And what happens on that is according to code, the interest in that returns to the general fund to help offset the expense of managing those funds for those outside agencies such as the MRDD, the Children's Services, mostly levies-funded activities.
Okay. So, when the interest rate dropped, when you lost the $6 million, is what you're saying? Okay.
Correct.
It, if you look at the revenue sheet, I saw just the last one that came out this week, sales tax is getting fairly close to where it was in 2007 and 2008, and it seems to be steadily increasing, slowly, but it's a positive sign. The weakness, the biggest weakness has been in the interest income and it's now millions of dollars, which is dragging down the revenue number. And that's fairly cyclic, but you can see that the national markets and the global markets haven't really increased significantly where we think that the interest curve is going to start yielding up. For a while there, we had, I want to call it artificial revenue because our yield curve on our investments was much higher, but as those investments had to renew because there's limitations on how long they can be purchased for and the type of instruments that can be used.
Well, that's what I'm asking for. Not so much the money that's flowing in, but where are the investments and what are the interest rates and all those?
Right. But see, we're very restricted in that also by code and what the treasurer can invest in. And I would encourage you to come to one of the.
IEC.
Meetings where.
Investment Advisory Council.
Where the, all these numbers are gone over by the portfolio management. I think you'll find it very interesting.
Well, I mean, we're all, you know, we're all dumbfounded by the fact that there's a half million dollars, a half a billion dollars out there being spent, and we're looking at 46 million.
Well, again, people focus in on the general fund.
Let me give you a simple scenario, the dog pound, okay? We get license, licenses for the dogs and adoption fees. All that money from the dog pound is only allowed to be spent there. We're not allowed to take money from the dog pound and pay for a sheriff. You know what I mean? So, all the money that is collected by different agencies have to go to those agencies.
Well, but even those agencies don't break even with the collections they make. You have to still subsidize them as well.
In a lot of cases, like the jail, for instance. Yes.
The, you know, an easy one that's really quick to look at is workforce development. We usually bring in about $3 million and we have funds to workforce development, but those dollars actually pass right through our budgets over to workforce development are very narrowly defined.
Well, you still have 9.2 percent unemployment, so the workforce development ain't working, so.
Well, you know, there's a lot of things not working in the country right now, Mr. Newman, but there's folks here working hard so people can get back engaged and back to work, but, you know.
And that's what I'm looking at, is we're projecting to the future there with that $5 million of income, $5 to $8 million in income from the lottery, not from the lottery from the casinos, the gambling debt. We're looking at that coming in and we're not projecting ahead. If we got that $5 million coming, then this needs to be a three-year expiring tax.
It is, it is.
I mean, but I mean, I mean, with the guarantee that it's not going to be placed back on the ballot.
Well, one thing that we run into an issue on, and Jerry, correct me if I'm wrong, we can't restrict future boards.
Right. You're 100% right, Commissioner. You cannot put a limitation on what a future board of commissioners would do.
Well, if this future board happens to be this board.
Well, they can give you a moral promise, but I don't think they give you a legislative promise that they would do that because they're not allowed to put that handcuff on any resolution.
Well, I don't mind him handcuffing someone, not handcuffing someone else, just handcuff themselves is what I'm asking. If two of you are still here, then we have a majority. That's all we ask. Thank you, Mr. Newman. Anyone else wishing to address?
Don't be afraid. No question is a bad question. All questions are good.
Chris, I'll call you out. You're a business owner as well. Would you like to, I know you have some input. No?
She's, you can talk after Elizabeth.
Okay.
Chris likes to be in the famous show and play, okay?
Okay, Elizabeth.
Elizabeth Rummings over there again. This has been a very informative, if somewhat chaotic session. Perhaps out of the record of it can be pooled some material that can be presented to people explaining where money is, what we can't do, why we can't do it and so forth and so on. But I keep occasionally talking about the continuing education of Elizabeth Rummings. It certainly has been that today.
Good. I'm glad.
Thank you.
Though I think through the process with the budget hearings, because we have to make a decision prior to finishing up all the budget hearings, and the board's going to come up with something, I would assume, that would go to the ballot when we finish all those budget hearings. Then the informational piece will be there. Right now, it's more of the public hearings required by law to talk about putting a sales tax on the ballot. We've got the budget numbers, which are all available to everyone. This is not the first time this has been discussed. And more of the public dialogue, asking questions. Mr. Newman did a very nice job. Mr. Weber, very nice job. Neil brought up some very good points. And then you and Shirley, of course. But I mean, it's just more of a dialoguing piece currently, and I think as we do the informational hearing tonight and then a week's worth of newspaper, I think those discussions will happen. And a lot of this is being brought out as we're discussing. To have the part, okay, here's what we're going to do. Last time we came out was actually a campaign to do it because it was under emergency. We imposed it and put it on the ballot. We had everything going forward. Here is more of a dialogue with the taxpayers on what they think can and can't happen because it's all for consideration at this point. It isn't a done deal yet. So, the difference in the type of meeting from a done deal, we're going to impose, do it by emergency, putting it on the ballot, and here's what's going to happen if it doesn't pass, and here's what the board's going to do, split it up over two years. That was already done. Do you know what I'm saying? The difference in the type of hearings that are being done? So, here it's just a discussion point on getting public input. The proposals have been printed in the paper and what we're discussing here in dialogue. It was a totally different type of meeting than two years ago with the imposing of a tax.
Quite so. I think the output from the commissioners helped the ordinary citizen who do not know the difference between state taxes, city taxes, city government, what the county can do, what the county cannot do, and so on. It's that kind of basic information which some of the questions from the critics today brought forth.
Right.
That I think will help very much to help citizens better understand how the county government works, what the county government does, and if they think the sales tax is needed. So, as I say, this has been a very, very informative session, not so much from what you were speaking to, but just for the education of the general public.
Thank you.
Too bad we didn't have more people here to hear it.
Commissioner Williams asked you to speak. You can come up and join us?
Um, I don't.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot, Chris.
Really? I don't, this is my first meeting and I thought it was very informative. I'm eager to come back and learn a lot more.
Okay.
I don't really know what else to say.
Okay.
Anyone else wishing to address the board? It's almost 11:30. If not, I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
Aye.
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 This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor downtown Elyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, then click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.
Notices were published in the Chronicle Telegraph and Morning Journal on June 29th and July 6, 2011 to hold the first sales tax hearing, which was held today at 10:00 a.m. This is the informational hearing. The second hearing will be July 20th at 10:00 a.m. to consider adoption of one or more of the following. One, purposes of supporting criminal administrative justice services in Lorraine County for a five-year period, an increase of the existing tax levy pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 5739.021 by the rate of 1/4 of 1 percent, increasing the existing tax levy pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 5741.021 by the rate of 1/4 of 1 percent. Two, for the purposes of supporting criminal administrative justice services in Lorraine County for a three-year period, an increase of the existing tax levy pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 5739.021 by a rate of 1/4 of 1 percent, and increasing the existing tax levy pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 5741.021 by the rate of 1/4 of 1 percent. Three, for the purposes of supporting criminal administrative justice services in Lorraine County for a three-year period, an increase of the existing tax levy pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 5739.021 by the rate of 1/2 of 1 percent, and increasing the existing tax levy pursuant to Revised Code Section 5741.021 by the rate of 1/2 of 1 percent. And this would be on the November ballot effective April 1st, 2012.
Thank you, Teresa. Hal, go ahead and shut it down. Let's see if somebody shows up here. Hal, go ahead and shut it down unless we get somebody who shows up here.